It's 7:30. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the September 25th, 2025, Olbridge Township Planning Board meeting. Please rise for the salute. Daniel, could we have a roll call, please?
Mr. De Palma?
Here.
Mr. Lanning?
Here.
Mr. Agopian?
Here.
Ms. Cannon?
Here.
Mr. Renner?
Here.
Mr. Petty?
Here.
Ms. Missella?
Here.
Mr. McIsaac is absent. Mr. Brennan?
Yeah.
Mr. Farrar?
Yeah.
And Chairman Lowry?
Here. Okay, we can go with the swearing of the professionals, please.
Our, uh... Would you raise your right hand? Do you swear that the testimony you're going to give this evening is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next on the agenda is executive session. Could I get a motion to, uh...
Move, move to go into executive session.
Second.
Mr. De Palma?
Yes.
Mr. Lanning?
Yes.
Mr. Agopian?
Yes.
Ms. Cannon?
Yes.
Mr. Renner?
Yes.
Mr. Petty?
Yes.
Ms. Missella?
Yes.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. Farrar?
Yes.
And Chairman Lowry?
Yes.
Okay, next on the agenda, we have the minutes of September fifteenth, two thousand twenty-five. Gonna get a motion to...
I'll make the motion.
Second.
I'll second.
Mr. DePalma?
Yes.
Mr. Lenning?
Yes.
Mr. Agopian?
Yes.
Ms. Cannon? Mr. Renner?
No.
It's abstain.
Mr. Petty?
Abstain.
Ms. Masella?
Yes.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. Farrar?
Yes.
Chairman Lowry?
Yes.
Okay, next resolutions. Twenty-nine dash twenty twenty-five P, Segme JBN Property LLC. Could I get a motion?
I'll move it.
I'll second.
Mr. DePalma?
Yes.
Mr. Lenning?
Yes.
Mr. Agopian?
Yes.
Ms. Cannon?
No.
Mr. Renner?
No.
Mr. Petty?
No.
Ms. Masella? Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. Farrar?
Yes.
Chairman Lowry?
No.
Next, we have resolution authorizing the settlement agreement with...
Chairman, that vote was for the resolution.
Oh, that...
Is everyone clear on the vote that that was, that vote was for the, which, which, I'm sorry, I was discussing something.
So, the resolution twenty-nine twenty-two, twenty-five P, Segme JBN Property LLC.
This is, that's memorializing the board's grant of accrual for the, the application that was heard at the end of July.
Right.
Okay, just wanna make sure everyone realizes, did everyone, when they voted, they realized that's the resolution we're voting on? Or was there anyone that misunderstood?
What's this?
It's gonna be the next.
Right. That's what I...
No, no, we're voting on this one first, there's two separate resolutions.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, oh, no, I, we wanted to make sure, so did we, did that vote, resolution pass or fail? I, I wasn't counting...
I think it passed.
Okay, one, two, it failed.
It failed.
Yes.
All right, so, just so, everyone voted, oh, am I not on? Sorry, I just wanna make sure that everyone understood what they voted, 'cause the vote came out as a failure. It was the vote to memorialize the board's approval of the, the application for Segme JBN Property LLC. That was, the board has approved that application back in July. This is just the resolution memorializing that approval. So, that's why I wanna make sure...
Joel, let's redo the vote.
Yeah.
That's what I'm thinking, we should redo the vote, I have a feeling it was a little confusion on, on what we were voting on there. So, if...
Bear with me one sec.
Okay.
Oops. Get your eraser, Danny.
We'll need another motion?
Yeah, just, and just so clear, this is, this motion is to adopt the resolution memorializing the board's approval for the application twenty-nine dash twenty-five P, twenty twenty-five P, which was the Segme JBN Property LLC application that was heard. Was it July twenty-nine?
July twenty-ninth, yeah.
July twenty-ninth.
We have a second?
You're first.
Okay.
Who moved it?
Who's first?
I think I moved.
Moved by Mr. Petty, second by Mr. Agopian. Mr. DePalma?
Yes.
Mr. Lenning?
Yes.
Mr. Agopian?
Yes.
Ms. Cannon?
Yes.
Mr. Renner?
No.
Mr. Petty?
Yes.
Ms. Masella?
Yes.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. Farrar?
Yes.
Chairman Lowry?
Yes.
Okay, next, we have a resolution authorizing the settlement agreement with Raceway Park.
Mr. Sordillo, just for the record, since we have one missing member, and Keith, I should only be calling Mr. Brennan, correct? As alternate one?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, yes.
Okay.
This is for... What we just discussed.
That's correct. So, now we do the second resolution.
Okay, we have, did we get a motion and a second on that?
I'll move it.
Second.
Mr. DePalma?
Yes.
Mr. Lenning?
Yes.
Mr. Agopian?
No.
Ms. Cannon?
No.
Mr. Renner?
No.
Mr. Petty?
No.
Ms. Masella?
No.
Mr. Brennan?
No.
And Chairman Lowry?
No.
Okay, next, we have applications. The first application up is thirty-seven dash twenty twenty-four P, Fox Houses LLC. It's a major preliminary subdivision with a major preliminary site plan with a C variance. I carried from June twenty-six twenty-five, and David Hemmerman is the attorney representing the applicant. Good evening.
Good evening.
Just press it till it turns green?
Press it till it turns green.
Right, sorry, I, I know that, I've been here a few times. Anyway, David Hemmerman for the applicant, Fox Houses LLC. Mr. Chairman, I did plan on moving forward with our application this evening and having our witnesses. I did have an opportunity before the meeting to talk to Ms. Sawant, your, your board planner. And it's been recommended that we, I guess several board members have expressed some concerns about the design layout. So, she indicated, Vina indicated that it might make sense for us to develop some revised concept plans and maybe work with your outside professionals and Ms. Sawant as well, and then we could come back at a, at a later meeting. Does that, does that make sense? Up, you gotta put the green light.
I think we should adjourn it to October twenty-sixth, we have just one application. I think it would make sense to carry it in the interim. The staff will reach out to you. Let's try and schedule a meeting early next week itself, so that Mark has adequate time to respond. I would say, Mark, don't do anything till we meet, so let's try to schedule something probably Monday or Tuesday.
Very good.
Yeah, Vina, for the record, it's the twenty-third.
Twenty-third, I thought so.
Sorry, I'm just all over.
Well, you're, that's fine, just... Yeah, just, yeah, it might be, I don't, the twenty, it might be, I don't know, it's like the twenty-third, or... Yeah, we have a, we have a hearing, and I have a hearing in another town that night. One step at a time, let's...
Yeah, let's just carry it to twenty-third.
Right.
And then figure this out.
Right. Just next week, you should just, so you're looking at maybe Monday or Tuesday, maybe, to have a meeting?
Yes, yes.
Okay, because it's another Jewish holiday for me on, the Wednesday night and Thursday, but that's, we'll...
Okay.
We'll be in touch.
Sure.
Okay. What's that, Yonk, keep going, yes.
Yep.
All right, so, Mr. Chairman, I believe the, the request that's being made of the board is to agree to grant the request to adjourn this application to the October twenty-third planning board meeting to give the applicant a time to meet with the board professionals, address some of the concerns that have already been raised, and work out the potentially redesigning some of the, the proposals before they proceed with the public hearing before the board.
That's correct.
And the twenty-third is a regular board meeting, it's not a special meeting.
Mrs. Sordillo?
Thank you.
If you can just confirm with or without notice?
Oh, no, I, yes, I was going to announce it, it will be without notice, 'cause we're announcing it now. So, anyone from the public, if the board grants the appro, the adjournment request, it will, this is being carried to the October twenty-third public hearing of the planning board without further notice. This is the notice that you're providing, you're being provided now, that too, if you have any comments or want to hear this application, go to appear at the October twenty-third meeting.
Very good, thank you.
Okay, can I get a motion to move this forward?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. DePalma?
Yes.
Mr. Lenning?
Yes.
Mr. Agopian?
Yes.
Ms. Cannon? Mr. Renner?
Yes.
Mr. Petty?
Yes.
Ms. Masella?
Yes.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
And Chairman Lowry?
Yes.
Thank you very much, and we'll see you soon.
Good evening.
Have a good night.
Next application has been adjourned to November thirteenth, that would be zero-four dash twenty twenty-five P, six hundred Jack.
Mr. Chairman, if I can just verify with either Danny or Vina, on this application, is this being carried without further notice? Or is there a notice, additional notice being provided for the six hundred Jacks, Jack Street?
I think that's really up to you and the board, but I think the intention was to carry it without further notice and then make that notice now.
Okay, that's, that's why I didn't know what the request was, 'cause I didn't see that request. So, Mr. Chairman, the request of the board would be to agree to adjourn the public hearing on six hundred Jack Street LLC application to the November thirteenth, twenty twenty-five, regular planning board meeting without further notice. So, anyone that was here on that application, you're being provided notice that that application's being carried to the, if granted by the board, to the November thirteenth meeting, if you wanna speak to that application, you have to appear at the board meeting on the November thirteenth planning board meeting.
This is Sordillo, with this application, if I'm not mistaken, this is the one that is right on Route thirty-four next to...
Madison Garden Apartments.
Yes, so, I think this should be noticed.
Okay.
This should, this one should be noticed, and I'll apologize to the, to the people that own the property, it's just, there's a lot of people. That's, that corner's a strange corner, and I know we've heard that already. I don't think that it should be without notice, it should be noticed.
If, if the board may recall, this was originally found as Bright View or something like that. And there was a hearing, there were a lot of residents involved, and then the application was withdrawn. So, I know there is a lot of interest in the application.
This one, I think this one is the one, we had a lot of concerns about water issues, and of course, it's on this weird hill and things like that. If we can, just make sure they notice it, just so the residents are aware, so they can come out.
Yeah, that was the apartment building that was on the corner.
Yep.
Okay, so, just to clarify what I said recently, previously, anyone in the public, this is being carried, or if the board agrees, it will be carried to the November thirteenth planning board meeting, but the applicant's gonna be required to provide additional notice. This is not being carried without notice. So, you are, you've had the notice from what I said, but you will be provided additional notice, we will require the applicant to do so.
Okay, can I get a motion to...
Motion.
Second.
Mr. DePalma?
Yes.
Mr. Lenning?
Yes.
Mr. Agopian?
Yes.
Ms. Cannon?
Yes.
Mr. Renner?
Yes.
Mr. Petty?
Yes.
Ms. Masella?
Yes.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Chairman Lowry?
Yes.
Okay, next application is thirteen dash twenty twenty-five P, Peter Zimney, ninety-five Wesley Road. Major preliminary subdivision and a major preliminary site plan with a C variance, represented by Salvatore Alfari Esquire. Good evening.
Good evening, Chairman, members of the board, Dante Alfieri, on behalf of the applicant. I'm here in the stead of my father. As the chairman stated, we're here seeking the board's approval for a minor subdivision. The property address is ninety-five Wesley Road. There, we're proposing to create two new lots, there is a, one, or there is a house currently under construction, and we're proposing to subdivide and then construct a second house. I do have one individual to provide testimony tonight, Mr. Plaskanka, who will go through the engineering and planning.
Would you please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're going to give this evening is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I, I do.
Can you please, oh, I did at the beginning of the meeting. Do you, could you please... Can you please, oh, I did at the beginning of the meeting, do you, could you please state your name and spell it for the record?
John J. Plaskonka, P.L.O.S.K.O.N.K.A., professional engineer, professional planner, Manellup, New Jersey.
Can you please provide your qualifications for the board?
I've appeared before the board a number of times in Old Bridge, South River, South Amboy, Manellup, and Marborough, for the last 50 years.
You're accepted.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Take it away, Mr. Plaskonka.
All right, I do have some aerial maps that show a little more detail, if we want to hand these out to the board.
So, we will mark those as Exhibit A1?
Thank you, one. So, my client, Mr. Zimney, owns four acres of property on Wesley Road, which has water and sewer in the street, he's building the house on the lot, lower lot, which is a 48.11, the house is under construction and should be CO'd in a couple of weeks, almost finished, and he's dividing the property, which is again, four acres, into two 88,000, 80,000 square foot lots, so we have a zoning requirement of 20,000 square feet in the zone, and we have four times the size for each lot, the lots are encumbered by wetlands and wetlands buffer, we've been to DEP, we have the LOI, and we've identified that on the plans that are on the board, on the, on the screen, as well as on this map, basically where the woods end for the existing house is the wetlands line with the buffer, and that's been defined by, again, by DEP in June 2024, the lots require variances for the non-critical area for lot 48.11 is 35,489, but it's not 65% of the requirement, it's 42% of the requirement, however, it's twice the size, almost twice the size of the zone requirement of 20,000 square feet, so there's plenty of room to build a house and have other amenities, the second lot that's being proposed for a new home has a 18,000 square foot of a non-critical area, where it's 22%, because most of the land behind it is wetlands and floodplain, if that, if that land was cut off, it would be basically no variances, if that was sold to the town or given away, that'll be all encumbered with a conservation easement in the future, so based on the DEP requirements, we seek the two variances that we're asking for, and we also have a report from the arborist indicating that there was some additional clearing out there, so that we will agree to his conditions in his letter that the board, I believe, has, to make sure that when we apply for a clearing permit for the new lot, that we set up the silk fence and the orange fence, and make sure we guarantee that we will not go beyond the wetlands buffer line, which will also be required by DEP to be identified with poles and stanchions and identification for the whole, both lots. I'd say, based on that, we respectfully request the board to approve these two lots of division.
And you reviewed, you reviewed the professional, the board professionals' report dated September 25th?
I think I identified the square footage of the whole portion of property, 18,000 for the upper lot and 35,000 for the lower lot, I don't see any other issues, we, we'll provide what other information they asked for, we agreed to do.
So, no, any, any technical comments you will agree to comply with?
Yes.
Thank you.
Are you finished with your testimony?
Yes.
Okay, Rakesh, would you like to-
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I am playing the role of Ms. Shapiro tonight, so, I'm referring to Ms. Shapiro and Ms. Solomon's letter from, it's dated September 25, 2025, I don't really have any questions that are in the memo, because I think most of the items, the applicant said they'll comply with, I imagine, they, there's some technical issues with labeling and all that, the only question I do have, and it's not in the, in the technical memo, and I was just texting with, with Ms. Shapiro, is regarding the disturbance for both lots as a whole, because the way the stormwater management rules are, that the township has to, has to enforce the DEP stormwater management rules, is that development that results in an acre disturbance, going back to 2004, so you have to sort of like hop in a time machine and go back, requires stormwater management, so the, can you quantify, I think you just sort of, I think you said 18,000 square feet of disturbance on the new lot, and the lot where it's currently be, the house is being built, it's about 35,000 square feet, is that right?
Correct.
So, so that, obviously, it's, it's over an acre of disturbance, so there's going to need to be some form of stormwater management, so I think as a condition of approval, should the board act favorably, the applicant would, would be required to work with Ms. Shapiro's office to propose a stormwater management system that would comply with the township's stormwater management ordinance and the DEP's stormwater management requirements.
Absolutely.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Vina?
So, I don't have a question for Mr. Plaskonka, but I just want to make a comment that, in my memo, I have specified that these two lots actually were two separate lots, have been combined due to doctrine of mergers, when you have two undersized lots owned by, which are under common ownership, they are combined, many other lots on Wesley Street are the same size, the other thing that I wanted to point out is, there is a variance for the non-critical area, and I just want to bring it to your attention, that although that variance is required, remember that these lots are significantly larger than what the zone requires, and the developable portion on the lot is still large, they're not asking for any bulk variance relief, so, which clearly shows that they are developing within the developable portion, and the style or the land use pattern is quite consistent with what exists along Wesley, I think the planning board had a similar application on Wesley almost four years ago, so, this has been a pattern, I think this is the last vacant lawn that was left on Wesley that is being subdivided.
Mr. Chairman, one other thing, I apologize, and I don't know if this was covered in the applicant's testimony, I may have missed it, there's two things that are in the, in the memo that maybe we should discuss, there's a request by Ms. Shapiro to revise the grading in the rear yard to, to provide a little bit more usable yard space in the back, perhaps through the use of some form of retaining wall or something, is that the applicant amenable to working with engineering to revise the grading to provide a more usable yard?
Absolutely, we can do a, a small retaining wall in the backyard, and maybe there was a possibility we can move the house closer to the road, but not be in front of the setback line, we do conform to everything else.
Perfect.
Looking at a different front entry garage, rather than the side entry garage, I mean, that work.
Okay, that, that might actually also help with your stormwater management, too, actually.
Yeah.
The other question that's in the memo is with regard to the township ordinance for tree clearing, are you, have you had a chance to review the memo from, our township conservation officer?
Yes, I have, and we agreed to these terms and conditions.
Okay.
I know Gary Lovello will beat us up if we don't.
This is a fact, all right. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Just give me one second, he's sharing the memo here, so, I think I covered everything, because I wrote it, so I know, but, just in case, with the FAR, when you submit for compliance, make sure you have the FAR requirement, I know the lot is much larger than the zone requirements, I don't believe you would need an FAR variance, but I would just want those numbers in place.
We'll provide those.
That's pretty much it.
Thank you, any questions from my right?
I, I do have a question for Lander, you mentioned the size of the property is consistent with the adjacent properties in the community, is that the size prior to the subdivision, or?
After the subdivision.
After the subdivision, thank you.
Okay, anybody to my left, questions on this? Okay, yeah, I, I made a little field trip out there, and I did see, it looked like what you show, the proposed house with some trees on it, it looked like it was all cleared already, and the gray drops off very, very steeply in the back, and, and the, even though the drawing looks like, there's a few trees there, it looked like a lot of old growth trees there on that limit line, will, will a, will a description be attached to the deed to limit, to, so that when this house gets sold, that the next owners, if they sell, will realize that there's a, a limit to what they can do with their property?
They'll know the fact that there's a wetlands line and a wetlands buffer, which is 50 feet, which has to be demarcated on the plan, so, any survey going forward would show that line of the buffer that they can't cross, and it'll be, it'll be physical barriers in the, in the field showing that also, but if you want it to be into the deed, we can put it into the deed, too.
Well, sometimes with a deed, they, they have a little sketch attached with the deed, so that, you know, when you get your deed, there it is.
We can do that.
I think, I think, Mr. Chairman, that you testified that there was going to be a conservation easement recorded-
Yes.
-as well, that actually has exactly what you, and that's in the title, so it might not be a deed, but any title reports come up with that, the same as the title company, so, I mean, if the applicant's willing to do it, I'm not saying that we can't ask them to do it, but I, what you're asking for will be exactly in that conservation easement, and it will already be in the chain of titles.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I, I know I'm talking a lot for someone who just looked at this application 10 minutes ago, one of the things that, that we've, we require for conservation easements is a demarcation, and usually, it's, it's some sort of fence, so like a split rail fence, or something, an actual barrier with a sign that, that demarcates that the area beyond that is a conservation area.
The plans do call for a, a barrier of, of, let me get the, I think it's shown on the map up there, is it, can you read that on the map?
Andy, can you zoom in, maybe we can get, it would be along the, along the, yeah, along that buffer. Along, so they say a post, yeah, right there, if you zoom in on that, what's that note say, Danny? No, Danny, I'm, I'm gonna seasick, at 40 feet on center spacing, yeah, I mean, I, I think we would need, we also have a sign, you don't have to put it on every single post, but, but there is a sign that we make, that we have developers post, that says, area be, you know, environmental sensitive area, and then sort of gives restrictions on what people can, can and can't do.
Provide me a detail and more additio-
Absolutely, yep.
How's that?
Yeah, our engineering will provide it.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, are we finished? Okay, can I get a motion?
Actually, we gotta open it up to the public for any questions or comments.
Okay, sorry, I'm opening up to the public, seeing no hands, close the public portion, now can we get?
Make a motion, second.
Who's, who's first? Mr. DePalma?
Yes.
Mr. Lenning?
Yes.
Mr. Hagopian?
Yes.
Ms. Cannon?
Yes.
Mr. Renner?
Yes.
Mr. Petty?
Yes.
Ms. Masella?
Yes.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
And Chairman Lauer?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Chairman, we appreciate your time tonight.
Okay, I'd like to open up to general public comments, anybody have a comment? Seeing no hands, I closed the public comment portion, can I get a motion to adjourn?
Move it, a second.
One in favor?
Aye.
Aye.